If you would. Right, and do the pledge with me, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Public comments, announcements, recognitions? Do we have any? No?
The agenda says you have Water's Worth It Month.
I have a proclamation. Are you, are you accepting? Okay. All right, I have a proclamation that I'd like to read. Whereas Water's Worth It Month is being promoted by the Oklahoma Water Environment Association to help increase Oklahoma communities' awareness of our most precious natural resource. And whereas Water's Worth It is a campaign by Water Environment Federation to help answer questions about how our actions, attitudes, and the things we most value are closely connected with water. And whereas Water's Worth It Month is one of the many ways to help promote the protection of Guthrie's water by increasing educational efforts. Educational efforts that could include information on how to conserve, protect, and reuse water, as well as encouraging programs for schoolchildren to teach them the value of water. And whereas Water's Worth our respect. Communities are built on water. And whereas Water's Worth our effort, clean water is everybody's responsibility. And whereas Water's Worth our health, water is life, and life is water. And whereas Water's Worth our future, dealing with aging infrastructure. And whereas Water's Worth our passion as we find solutions for the 21st century. And whereas the protection and conservation of Guthrie's water improves the quality of life by having a cleaner and more abundant supply of water now and in the future, and reduces the cost of water and water treatment. And now therefore I, Stephen J. Gentling, Mayor of the Guthrie, City of Guthrie, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2015 as Water's Worth It Month, and call all citizens and civic organizations to become knowledgeable and acquaint themselves with the issues involving maintaining of safe water. This proclamation is dated the 7th day of July 2015, and signed by myself, Stephen J. Gentling, Mayor. And I present that. Maxine? Thank you.
On behalf of the City of Guthrie, and the Guthrie Public Works Authority, and the water treatment facility, we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Item number three, Consent Agenda. I have one item, A, on the Consent Agenda, approval of the minutes of June 16th. Do I hear a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Cast your votes, please. Let's see them. It's unanimous by all those present. Item number four, discussion of possible action of the Finance Committee recommending adjustment of utility account on West Oklahoma. Is there any discussion?
Did they have water problems? Is that what it was, what this was about? There's water leaks, is that what it is? Or do you remember?
That specific one?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, well, I know that we were making kind of a concession with him. This is Mr. Khan about, remind me, Kim, about some of the agreement here. But I think we gave him a little bit of credit, and we're going to do some monitoring, future monitoring, as well as replace his meter.
That's why, yeah. We replaced his meter and all.
Right now, we're just kind of moving forward. You're going to see this again, probably, or at least the Finance Committee will probably see this again as we assess if it worked out or not.
Do they think he has a leak? Or is it just?
We don't know. Could not find the leak. I understand.
We couldn't find a leak.
Could not find the leak.
But we don't know if it's a bad meter?
There may be some other extenuating circumstances with neighbors. There was also, there was also some tweaking with the meter itself, turning it on and off every time. We think that could have created problems. But, but again, we'll see this in the future, I'm sure. This is just a short-term.
Turning on and off the meter.
I mean, I'll just ask, because I just, I got, because I read on internet.
Because he thought maybe it was leaking, so he turned it off and see if it wasn't. But his bill still went up, and so.
I think we're trying to develop a new starting point.
Right.
Here. And, and reach a level that reflects some, some, I don't know, penalty is the right word, but also an appreciation for some uncertainties that were happening with water usage. Whether it was leak, whether it was somebody else using the water, whatever. But starting it, kind of wiping the slate clean and creating a new starting point.
I think it's worded well. I think it's a starting point, reset.
And that's the reason why I was asking something. He hadn't talked to me or anything. I was just, because I'd read about that, and I thought, holy cow, that one month, it was like $1,000 or something like that. And I went.
I will entertain a motion in a second then to accept the recommendation by the Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
If you had, if you had a leak, it would have been $1,000 every month. You know? So there's something else going on. I'm not sure why we would want to concede anything on that unless we don't, we know what's wrong.
Well, like we said, we, we met with him for quite a long time, and there was a whole lot of issues. And the only way to kind of clear those issues is to have the, and I think the mayor said, well, do a reset. And then we're going to start monitoring after that and see what's going on.
Setting a precedent to have everybody come in here and.
Speaking of your mic.
Here's, here's the problem. We do have everybody coming in. So, and that's not the problem. Well, and it's a minor reset. I mean, there's, there could be a lot more that we could give. We barely, we didn't do much, actually, in the, in the way that.
But the Finance Committee has met with everybody, and this is what you approve. You, you're, this is what you're recommending to go with?
Yes.
And this is the best course of action?
This is what we recommend.
Okay.
After talking to him for about 45 minutes, so.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Please submit your vote.
All votes ranked.
Let's see the vote. It, it passes by a four to one vote. I'm sorry, five to one vote. Item number five, discussion of possible action, the Finance Recommand, Finance Committee Recommendation Utility Account on West Noble. Discussion?
What was that one all about?
Was it the same thing?
Well, no, it was a, it was a different one. And you might, again, help me, Kim, here. But from what I understand, this was, is this, this is that kid who, there was problems with whether.
The water service was on.
Right.
He moved in. So he assumed that his landlord was paying the bill. And seven months went by. And when we turned it off, blocked it, actually. And that was, he did, that's when he realized he was supposed to pay the bill. And so we backfilled him for the, for the, the usage for that seven months. And so he came forward and asked if we would take responsibility for not catching a sooner.
And we did it, adjusting. It's a partial adjustment. It's not a full adjustment.
And that's our fault?
Well, I think there was a question, wasn't it? That whether we turned off the meter or we turned it off.
I mean, our practice is when, you know, someone moves out of the house, they are to go and lock the meter. That doesn't always happen. They just turn it off. Our meter specs will just turn it off, and anyone can turn it back on. And so in this situation, we don't, we don't know who turned the water on. But he had water service and just assumed that his landlord was taking care of the bill.
And we should have blocked it.
I'm sorry.
So, you know, and we should have locked it. And so that's why we were giving a little concession. It's not, it's not a big one, but.
So it's, you know, we didn't lock the.
It's a partial concession on what was possibly error on the city and.
Again, we talked to him for quite a while, and we just felt like this is a, you know, a partial concession. And I don't think it was very big, but.
I believe we're credited in three months, and he's paying for four.
You lived there for seven?
Yes.
So we're paying for his water?
But part of it was our error.
Yeah, it's potentially our error, so that's why we.
This would be, this was paying for our error.
I think you don't get water for free. I think he's, he should get it from his landlord or from, or he should pay for it. But the city shouldn't be giving water away for free.
I think the issue was the locking of the meter. If that wasn't the case, I would agree with you.
What's the locking got to do with it? He used water for seven months. He's going to pay for seven months.
The rest of his utilities paid?
I'll, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Finance Committee recommendation here. So moved.
Second.
Further discussion?
I just say you're opening Pandora's box when you start doing this for people, because you're going to keep doing it for everybody. You're going, your, your committee's going to be over swamped with this kind of requests.
All right. It's time to vote.
All votes ranked.
Again, a, it's passed by a vote of five to one. Item number six, discussion and act, possible action on Finance Committee Recommendation concerning utility adjustment on East College. Discussion?
And I think this is one where we actually denied the request. So, so I guess if we vote for this, we are denying it correctly?
It's your recommendation.
Okay.
It's your recommendation. Right. I will entertain a motion in a second. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Submit your vote.
All votes ranked.
Unanimous to accept the Finance Committee's recommendation. Our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting is adjourned. Call to order, our City Council meeting. We have a number of items on the Consent Agenda. I would, I would like us to consider removing items G and H from the Consent Agenda for discussion. And so then I will accept a motion in a second to approve the items on the Consent Agenda, A through F, and I through K. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Submit your vote, please.
All votes ranked.
Unanimous by all the councilmen in attendance. I'd like to, I'd like to have some discussion on the items G and H on the Consent Agenda. Item G is approval of a lease agreement concerning space 20B. And H is concerning space 20C, construction of new hangar space. And the discussion I'd like to have is, when we have had our retreat, as well as other dialogue, with our airport authority manager, there's been significant discussion about leases versus building of hangars by the authority, by the trust. And this lease is a 30-year lease with two five-years, five-year extensions. And it just seems to me that we're, we might be going down the same path as, as there's been discussion about that we've been on, that doesn't generate as much revenue and is something that isn't necessarily the desire of the, of the manager at that time, of the, of the airport. And before we moved into adding yet another piece to that lease agreement, I thought maybe we should have some discussion. Unfortunately, we are in transition with our airport manager. And Cody, I don't know if you are available to give us any kind of thought on, on the lease, how the, how the Airport Board views leases, new leases, as opposed to looking at the construction themselves via the trust for the airport, and the pros and cons of that?
Starting with probably the most recent part of your comment, I, I can't speak for how the Airport Board views these leases. I know that you do have a member on your council who is a, at least one member, I think, who is a member of that board. And I don't know if Randall has any experience on that board as well. He's shaking his head, yes. So those two members might be able to tell you a little bit more about the opinions of the board themselves. I just want to draw your attention to one thing. I'm not a guy who knows airports. I'm going to address that very, very clearly. But from what I understand, these leases become after those, those 30-year, that 30-year lease with two extensions for five, they become an asset of the city. Is that right, Randall?
Yes, the hangar itself reverts back to the city at the end of the lease. We own it at the end of the 40 years.
And, and there is some part of new construction of new hangars that has to deal with the EEDA loan repayment. Is that, is that right as well?
Yes. I mean, I'd be happy to, Cheryl, you, as a member, but I, I attend all the meetings on the airport.
You've got the legal expertise.
This lease is, and I think this is one of the leases that is part of the corporate hangar development area. And there is a specific loan agreement with the Edmond Economic Development Association to get utilities to this site. So the, the Airport Board is most anxious to get these sites leased because they're, the payment goes, part of the payment will go to pay off that loan. And that's the only source of the repayment there. The city's not obligated, other than the hangars that are built on these specific sites, the corporate hangar sites. So we did have discussion on a couple occasions, intense discussions. Facts went out for bids one time for a Tin Bay Tea Hangar, and the bids came in considerably more than what the Airport Board and the City Council at the time thought they would be. Those were rejected. And at the moment, at least where the corporate hangar spaces are concerned, I think the Airport Board is delighted to be able to lease. They do lease at a higher rate than we've leased the older hangars. The old hangars are nine cents a foot ground lease. These are 17 cents a foot ground lease. So we do make a little bit more money. And then the, at the end of the term, which in this case will be 40 years, most likely, that does revert, the hangar itself reverts to the city, and we own it and can lease it ourselves. Until the city is able to build the hangars themselves and have the wherewithal, financial wherewithal to do that, this is really the only way we're going to get hangars built there.
Is this, do other regional airports charge 17 cents? Is that high? Is it low? I, I thought it was low, but.
It's, it's not, it's kind of in the middle. They did, before they settled on this rate, they did a study of all the airports in the area, similar sized airports, and what they, how they did it. It's certainly not high by any stretch of imagination. I'd say it's in the middle, middle ground.
Now, with this lease, if, let's say that, we're talking 40 years from now. We know the same people are not going to have the lease. Well, I don't think they would. But does that transfer to somebody new? Will that stay with the same lease?
If the, we've had several that have sold their hangars. The lease, the, the new owner of the hangar space assumes the lease.
Okay, that's what I was going to say.
And these all have five-year cost of living adjustments in them, which gets a little bit of bump in the price. But I think particularly on the corporate hangar area, the Airport Board is working hard to get those spaces leased because they want to be able to repay that loan as soon as possible. And the only way to pay it is to lease the corporate spaces.
This is a long-term investment. It doesn't look like we're making money right now, but in 40 years, that's, we're looking far ahead. And this is actually a good plan.
Well, it, you know, different airports do it different ways, and some are more flush with cash than we are. And they go out and build their own. We've not been in that luxurious position. So this is the way Guthrie historically has chosen to get.
Does the trust have access to any other kind of funding mechanism that would facilitate that?
Well, actually, the Airport Board is not a separate trust. That's a whole nother discussion that we've had, is the pros and cons of it being a separate trust authority, standalone, like the Oklahoma City Airport, basically. They have not chosen to recommend that to the council. If they, if it was a standalone trust, like GPWA or the Guthrie Industrial Development Authority, then if they could, in fact, get underwriting, they could borrow money as a separate entity without the city's full faith and credit, basically, to build hangars and all hangars. To do that, they've got to have an underwriter and a financial advisor say, yes, your plan is a good plan, i.e., you're going to build 10 hangars at $400,000, and you will be able to rent those and pay that money back. It'd be a revenue bond, basically, so it would be financed. And that would be available if it was a trust. But they still have to show that it's a financially viable project. When we went out for bids, it just came in so high. I think we were estimating a couple hundred thousand dollars, and it came in almost double what.
Is, is our partner in, in this airport, i.e. the City of Edmond, are they available at all to help construct financing?
I don't know.
Okay.
I can't speak for Edmond. You know, I think that's a discussion. Edmond has shown great interest in our airport being improved and going, becoming kind of pearl of the region. So I think they would probably be open to those discussions. I think we would just have to have some kind of game plan to present. Right now, they pay half of the operating costs of the airport annually. They participated in the matches with the FAA money. Having said that, they might be willing to joint venture a deal with the, with the City of Guthrie to build hangars.
Well, I, and the reason I asked for this to be taken off the consent is because of the dialogue that we had had as a group with the previous airport manager, and, and his seeming significant desire that, that he would have, that they would have less leases. And here we're incorporating a brand-new lease.
In a perfect world, we'd own the hangars, and we'd generate revenue. The reality right now is, I think, if we built the hangars for the foreseeable future, 20 years, however long you finance the hangars, most of the rent's going to go to pay the debt service until you get that mortgage paid off or the construction of the hangars paid off. Now, having said that, we, if everything went the way we would hope, you'd get it paid off in 20 years instead of, and so you'd own it in 20 years instead of 40 years.
Yeah.
And then you'd have that net rent to go to the community.
Right. Okay. All right. I would entertain a motion then to approve items G and H. So moved.
Separate. Well, they're consent items, so I think we can take them together.
Okay. We'll take them together as items G and H.
They're essentially the same, but just a different lot, right?
They're two different lots.
Same lease, two different lots.
20A and 20B, I believe. Or C and D.
Right next to each other.
Yeah. So we have a, a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Submit your vote, please.
All votes ranked.
Unanimous to approve the lease agreements by Ron and Tony Jewell for items, their space number 20B and 20C. Item number three, discussion, possible action to appoint one member of, to the Guthrie Convention Visitors Board. Discussion. I, I must say that I have great hopes that, that we will be able to provide a bridge between the Chamber and the CVB. I know the history when it was moved from the Chamber to the city. And there were some differences of opinion about that move. And I have great hopes that we could provide some, a bridge, in this case, maybe a member of the Chamber being on the CVB Board. Having said that, the individual whose name is before us has been an applicant for the President of the Chamber, is clearly an applicant for this job. However, he has not been, they have not solidified that position as President of the Chamber, as I understand it. That negotiation is still happening.
I think that has been corrected, and I do believe he is now the President.
Yeah, we got a new guy, right? It was as of today.
He's thinking, he's thinking the agreement.
Is, is that final?
Yes.
Okay, I'm speaking of 24 hours information then, so.
It was this morning.
Okay. All right. Well, then, I, I believe that, that Mr. Coleman would be an excellent candidate and provide this opportunity to provide that bridge that I talk about, to provide an opportunity for the CVB and the, and the Chamber to work in unison towards a common goal, which is the enhancement of Guthrie America. That would be my discussion. I am.
I would certainly support that. I think that he's an excellent choice. He's a, he's a really strong Guthrie person and would be excellent in doing that for us.
I would entertain then a motion in a second to approve that appointment of Mr. Coleman to the CVB. So moved.
A second then.
Any further discussion? Submit your vote, please. Let us see them. It's unanimous by all those present to approve Mr. Coleman's appointment as a member of the Guthrie Convention Visitors Bureau. City Managers Report.
I think Mr. Coleman will be a great asset to building that bridge that you talked about and ushering the new spirit of cooperation. I think, I think it's a great, a great move. Last week, Jim Augren and I met with representatives of the police and the fire union, working on their new agreements. Staff has also been making good progress on the 2016 fiscal year budget, so we're excited about that. Upcoming events, July 9th, teen movie night, which starts at 4 o'clock in the Guthrie Public Library. It's Iron Man 3 this week. July 11th, youth splash and dash. July, the week of, July 17th, the weekend of 17th, 18th, and 19th is really busy. July 17th through the 19th, Lazy E presents Red Dirt, classic team roping. They always seem to have something going there. A great asset for the community. July 18th, First Capitol Triathlon. And then that night, Apothecary Nights at Second and Oklahoma. Towards the end of the month, July 25th, Guthrie America Live at Division and Oklahoma. We also have, Guthrie's been featured in the recent copy of This Land Express. And of course, don't want folks to forget that every Saturday, Guthrie Farmers Market at Division in Oklahoma. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Lots of things going on, and Larry, we continue to, greatly appreciate your continued efforts and support in the interim capacity.
Thank you, sir.
Item number five, comments from members of the City Council. Councilwoman Paget?
I hope everybody had a safe and happy Fourth and remembered the reason that we are allowed to celebrate the Fourth of July. Other than that, attend the Lazy E and enjoy your family.
Councilman Taylor?
Well, I think our water's finally filled up and all of our lakes. As I said at my church yesterday, it's time to start praying for it to stop raining. And we're, we've had about 15 inches at my house in the last three weeks.
we're, we've had about 15 inches at my house in the last three weeks, so that'll tell you how much rain we've had. So I'm ready for it to quit raining. I can't cut hay, I can't do anything. And my roads are all falling apart on the mail route. That's not fun either, so. That's it.
Councilman Edwood.
Again, thank you. Hope everyone did, again, coming, I hope everybody had a safe Fourth of July and a happy one. Thank you again, interim city manager. I appreciate all your work and everything we're doing here. Again, I think we had a good discussion earlier with the Excelsior Library Group. I look forward to working with that and seeing that through and hopefully that everything will work well and everything that we can work together and get that taken care of and make that a shining jewel of Guthrie's, so. Thank you.
Councilman Johnwood.
I would agree with Ed there that we had a great discussion today. I think we learned some good information and that I'm looking forward to some new information and just seeing citizens step up for something that they seem to care for, so I thought that was pretty nice.
I can just echo what everybody said already, but the weather was beautiful actually to, to see that we're under 100 for as long as we have been is another record. Just like a couple of years ago, we had over 100 for several days back into May, so this is unusual and we should just enjoy it and.
It won't last.
No, it won't last.
We, we should enjoy it and as the proclamation said.
Yeah.
Water is, is a significant resource. We should be thankful for what we have and make plans for keeping what we have. Okay, item number six, Would Request Motion and Approval to Convene Into Executive Session for Purpose of Discussing Employment of Interim City Manager and Also City Manager.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Submit your vote.
All votes are in.
We are unanimous, all those present, to convene into executive session.